Hey, good morning and welcome to the October 23rd, 2018 Regular Board of County Commission Meeting. We have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. If you would take a moment, bow your head in a moment of silence with us. Commissioner Smith?
Please rise and pledge allegiance. I question the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for October the 4th? Motion by Commissioner Barfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. We're going to move into Resolutions, Awards, and Presentations. And at the request of our Supervisor of Elections, Ms. Lori Scott, we're going to start with yours, ma'am, because you have all these children here that you want to get back into school.
And I know they're just anxious to get back to school, right?
Their moms are. I'll read this, Ms. Scott, and then if you would take over, I would really be delighted. Whereas the Honorable Lori Scott, Brevard County Supervisor of Elections, partnered with Chick-fil-A to sponsor the 5th Annual Launch the Vote Student Art Contest to all of Brevard County 4th and 5th Grade Students. Whereas students were asked to create artwork in conjunction with the Launch to Vote theme, encouraging their voter participation and highlighting the importance of voting. And whereas on October 16th, 2018, the following community leaders, Judge Kelly McGibben, Ms. Hammond, Colonel Bobbitt, reviewed each of the 262 entries representing 12 schools throughout Brevard County. And whereas the following winners were selected. First place, Ashley Nicole Rogers of Pineapple Cove Classic Academy. Second place, London Olivia Thomas of Longleaf Elementary. Third place, Anna Livengood.
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 I forgot her name again.
Thank you, ma'am. Of Pineapple Cove Classic Academy. And honorable mentions for Emmeline Carpenter. Emmeline, thank you, I knew I was going to mess that one up. Seela Brooke Horgan and Benjamin Pritchett. Ooh, good last name. Whereas Chick-fil-A has designated a special award for the following winner, Emily Livengood of Pineapple Cove Classic Academy, an honorable mention for Ashley Delane Friday. Now therefore let it be resolved that the Board of County Commissions of Brevard County does hereby unanimously recognize and congratulate the winners of the Supervisor of Elections Chick-fil-A 2018 Launch for the Vote Student Art Contest for their exceptional artistic talent, patriotism, and enthusiasm for the electoral process. Done, ordered, and this regular session on the 23rd day of October 2018. I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Madam Chair, I just want to say with the number of artwork entries this year, which were almost 280, to narrow it down to these eight winners was very, very tough. And the judges had a tough time doing it, but their artwork is amazing. It will be hanging across the hall in my office for the next year. If you would like to come see it, Chick-fil-A will also be putting some of their artwork up in their local Chick-fil-A restaurants that we all love. And I just want to thank Chick-fil-A for being amazing community partners. The children were very excited. We had their award presentation across the hall before we walked over. Thank the judges and thank all of you for recognizing the importance of artwork in schools and how much the passion these kids have shown about our country, the patriotism. And they're all future voters, they have assured me. So if you'd like to take pictures, we have the cows. So if we can get you guys with the resolution presentation and come down with the kids. I told them they're paparazzi today, so. So let's go over here. We usually try and line up and see if we can get your pictures with the commissioners. Come on up, winners.
Those are the stars.
See, everything goes away when the cows come in. We all know. The cows fill the show.
All right, next resolution is for the Manufacturers Association. Y'all would come forward? Good morning, I'm going to read this, and I think you have a short video you're going to play, I heard. Okay, welcome. All right, whereas the Manufacturers Association of Florida Space Coast is an initiative of the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast that seeks to promote manufacturing through Maiden Brevard, a joint program of the EDC Cocoa Beach Regional Chamber of Commerce, Melbourne Regional Chamber of East Central Florida, the Greater Palm Bay Chamber of Commerce, and Titusville Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Maiden Brevard is focused on promoting and celebrating companies that manufacture products in Brevard County, Florida, and changing the perception of manufacturing careers through the EDC's Talent Asset Program. And whereas Maiden Brevard seeks to educate manufacturers, raise awareness about manufacturing careers, enable platforms for skilled development, enhance manufacturing jobs placement. And whereas the state of Florida recognizes the month of October as Manufacturing Month as an effective way to expand knowledge about the value of manufacturing brings to Florida's economy and to showcase the high skilled, high paid manufacturing jobs needed by the industry. And whereas Manufacturing Day is a national grassroots movement occurring on the first Friday of October. And whereas Manufacturing Day and Manufacturing Month, U.S. manufacturers open their doors to showcase modern manufacturing and foster interest in these careers. And whereas Maiden Brevard is encouraging more than the 500 manufacturers of Brevard County, Florida, partner organizations, and schools to participate in Manufacturing Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims October 2018 as Manufacturing Month in Brevard. And we recognize that Maiden Brevard as a partnership of the EDC and the four area chambers of commerce and the many dedicated local manufacturers. Done, ordered, and adopted this 23rd day of October 2018. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion on the board by myself and second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritchett. My name's Jason Jones, I'm with Century View Systems. I'm receiving this on behalf of the EDC and MASK, and also on behalf of the manufacturing community, joined with me today from reps from the four area chambers of commerce, Brevard Public Schools, Career Source Brevard, Eastern Florida State College, and the Economic Development Commission. This October, Space Coast Manufacturing are inviting the public to see manufacturing through our eyes. I'd like to share a short video.
This October, I invite you to see manufacturing through my eyes. I see C-decks sold in multiple countries across the globe, and that number is constantly growing. And I personally am proud to be a part of that.
I see great American quality in a manufacturer.
This looks like a regular pen to you, but to me, it is a dual-sharp plastic injection molded piece. And because to me, manufacturing is all about the details.
I see a future industrial automation. At Contact Americas, we use our own IOT innovations on our factory floor.
I see opportunity in a growing industry with more than 500 manufacturers.
This October, I invite you to see manufacturing through my eyes. I see opportunity in manufacturing.
Yes, I am. Okay, before I recognize the American Indians and Alaska natives, I just wanted to point out again what we just witnessed. We have over 500 manufacturing companies here just in Brevard County alone. And I'm, when I first heard that number, I was just astounded, because you don't think of Brevard County as being a manufacturing center at all. But that just goes to prove how hardworking our EDC and our chambers of commerce are performing this, I call it a miracle. Because manufacturing isn't just something that just happens. You have to go out there and pursue it and encourage it, and these folks have done that. So congratulations again. Okay, who do I have up here for Native American Day?
Good morning, Commissioners.
I'm Martha.
Hi.
All right. Whereas, American Indians and Alaska natives were the original inhabitants of the land that now constitutes the United States. And whereas, American Indians and Alaska natives have traditionally exhibited a respect for the fitness, finiteness of natural resources through a reverence for the earth. And whereas, American Indians and Alaska natives have served with valor in all of America's wars, beginning with the Revolutionary War, through the conflict in the Persian Gulf. And whereas, American Indians and Alaska natives have made distinct and important contributions to the United States and to the rest of the world in many fields, including agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art. And whereas, American Indians and Alaska natives deserve to be recognized for their individual contributions to the United States as local and national leaders, artists, athletes, and scholars. And whereas, this recognition will encourage self-esteem, pride, and self-awareness in American Indians and Alaska natives of all ages. And whereas, November is a time when many Americans commemorate a special time in the history of the United States, when American Indians and English settlers celebrated the bounty of their harvest and the promise of new kinships. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County... Say that again. Let's start over again. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of November 2018 as National Native American Heritage Month, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of October 2018. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
A motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We are so thankful for this recognition, and we wish that everyone can come out this November 9th, 10th, and 11th to Wickham Park, where we'll have our 10th Annual Native Rhythms Festival. It'll be a great reprieve from all of the voting and campaigning and everything that's going on to get our next elected officials into office. So come out and enjoy that over that Veterans Day weekend. It's family-friendly, free of admission. And we'd like to give a little preview, if you are willing to listen to a little music this morning, we can give you a little bit of the flute music by John Ellis. And I have Zeta Gibbs with me as well, who is coordinating all of our school day activities and our workshops. And I have some cards for everyone as well. Will a little music be appropriate?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. I'm also doing the resolution for homelessness. Is Miriam Moore here? Welcome. Let me read this, and then you guys can tell us a little bit more about what you're about. Whereas homelessness has caused or hastened the deaths of inadequately housed low-income persons in Brevard County. And whereas, the spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding the commitment to end homelessness. And whereas, December 21st, the first day of winter and the longest night of the year, has been designated National Homeless Person's Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless. And whereas, the Brevard Homeless Coalition has planned two county-wide memorial events recognized in the homeless people who have passed away in the past year in our county. The first memorial will take place at North Brevard Charities Sharing Center located at 4475 South Hopkins Avenue in Titusville. And the second will take place at Daily Bread located at 815 East Feet Avenue, Melbourne. Both services will be held at 3:00 p.m. on December 21st. And whereas, in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Brevard County are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for fellow citizens, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas, in remembering those who have died in our streets, in our emergency shelters, and in condemned or abandoned properties from ailments or conditions directly related to homelessness, the cause of ending homelessness is kept urgent, as is the collective commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby designate Friday, December 21st, 2018, as National Homeless Person's Memorial Day, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of October 2018. Madam Chair, I make a motion?
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. It is truly an honor and a privilege to accept this resolution on behalf of the Brevard Homeless Coalition and the many providers who work with great effort to promote awareness and provide services to the homeless children, families, individuals, and veterans of Brevard County. We thank the Commissioners for your ongoing support of our determination to end homelessness in Brevard.
Thank you. Any of you other folks like to say anything? No? You're right. Madam Chair, they're not politicians.
I didn't bring cows.
I didn't see Dana. Dana Packard? I don't know, has anybody heard from Dana Packard? Okay, do you guys want to come up then? I know you're a large group and you're purple.
Morning.
Hi. If it's okay with you, I'll read the resolution first.
Absolutely.
Okay. This is a resolution for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to an abuser's systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control. And whereas, 4,192 domestic violence offenses were reported to law enforcement in Brevard County in 2017, and of those, 10 victims were killed. And whereas, the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people and are supported by societal indifferences. And whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in Brevard County, throughout the United States and the world. And whereas, all citizens of Brevard, government officials, law enforcement agencies, healthcare providers, domestic violence programs, social services providers, educators, clergy, community leaders must join together to end the abuse and violence that continues to threaten the health, safety, and well-being of so many in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Together with Brevard County Domestic Violence Task Force, we urge citizens to speak out against domestic violence, support survivors' efforts to live free from abuse, and to hold those who abuse accountable. Done, ordered, adopted, and regular session this 23rd day of October AD 2018. Ms. Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Isnardi, second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a little small speech I would like to read. So on behalf of the Brevard County Domestic Violence Task Force, I'd like to thank the Commission for making this resolution for the tradition that goes on, that's gone back many years, this resolution which recognizes the issue of domestic violence and the impact it has on victims, their families, and in our community. The task force is made up of individuals and representatives from agencies that are committed to addressing the needs and the needs of victims and witnesses of domestic violence. The task force works to raise awareness and to work together to provide support and services to those affected. It is our fervent hope that individuals who have been impacted will receive assistance and justice that will aid in their healing and lead to their future success as empowered, productive members of our community. Thank you.
Sure is.
Okay, Lisa Fitzcloy, Andrew Weintraub, Neil? Coming up? All righty, we have a resolution for National Arts and Humanities Month? Give them a second. It's a big group of people. Whereas, the nation's 95,000 nonprofit arts organizations, the National Endowment of the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, the nation's 4,500 local art agencies, and the Arts and Humanities Councils of the 50 states and the six U.S. jurisdictions have regularly issued official proclamations on an annual basis, designating October as National Arts and Humanity Month. And whereas, the Arts and Humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas, the Arts and Humanities enrich the lives of every American and play in a uni- enrich the lives of every American and play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country, and whereas Brevard County through its local arts agency, Brevard Culture Alliance, celebrates the value and importance of culture in the lives of its residents and visitors, and whereas the nonprofit arts industry also strengthens our national economy by generating $166.3 billion in total economic activity annually, $27.54 billion in governmental revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of 4.6 million jobs, and whereas locally, Brevard County's arts and culture sector contributed 71.3 million to the GDP, generated 128 million in sales, and supported 1,464 full and part-time jobs in 2017. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as National Arts and Humanities Month, and encourage citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in Brevard County. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of October AD 2018. I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Isnardi, and to all of the commissioners. Even as we celebrate the arts and the culture throughout the year, this month is special. October is recognized nationally as Arts and Humanities Month. It's an opportunity for the members of this commission to show your continued support of the arts, and it provides Brevard Culture Alliance a newsworthy moment to raise public awareness about the role the arts and humanities play in our communities. We've often spoken about the impact, the economic impact of the arts, but today I would like to speak about how the arts impact our quality of life. From the thousands of schoolchildren in our arts and education programs who are learning 21st century skills such as creativity and innovation, the parents who get to work in inspiring arts districts, the retiree that's finally embracing her artistic side and exhibiting her work for the first time, or the grandfather that's healing faster in the hospital because of the art on the walls. The more than 1,400 jobs that comprise Brevard's arts and cultural sector are making this happen every day. So thank you very much for having us here, for championing this proclamation, and thank you for your continued support of public investment in the arts.
Our last resolution, but not our least, for the Pilot Club. I'm going to read this resolution. Before that, I'd like to say I'm amazed at all the stuff the Pilot Club does in the community, all the wonderful projects you do, and it's a real blessing, and I thank you for all your work. Whereas Pilot International was founded in Macon, Georgia in 1921, whereas this nonprofit agency's mission is to serve by furthering Pilot International's humanitarian efforts through charitable, educational, research programs in communities throughout the world, and whereas Pilot's motto is to do more, care more, be more. Pilot members strive to serve communities by reaching out to those in need. Whereas International Care and Kindness Week is dedicated to celebrating caregivers, encouraging families and friends who spend time together without cell phones, and express appreciation and thanks to teachers and mentors for their care and kindness, and whereas Pilot International has been true to its mission to serve communities throughout the world for almost 100 years and will continue to serve in our local community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby recognize the week of November 4th through 10th, 2018, as International Care and Kindness Week, encourages everyone to seek opportunities to join Pilot International in serving the community through fellowship and service. Done, ordered, and adopted this 23rd day of October 2018 by the Brevard County County Commissioners. I make a motion to approve. And a second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your kind words and for your support for International Care and Kindness Week, Board of Commissioners for making this proclamation. My name is Jolie Maroney. I am the president of the Riverview Pilot Club. With me here today, I think you might know her, Marsha Newell. She is our president-elect and will serve in that capacity next year. Winnie Brewer is a past president of Pilot International, so thank you all so much. As you recognize, created by Pilot International, International Care and Kindness Week is a week of long public awareness campaign meant to bring awareness to how simple acts can change a day, a life, or the world by simply showing someone that you care. We encourage our pilots to engage in numerous activities to emphasize and encourage kindness, caring, and general goodwill to others. Therefore, our club has chosen to honor the hard-working, dedicated members of the Brevard County Fire Departments at the following locations: Fire Station 21 and 22 located in Milnes, Fire Station 23 and 24 in Titusville. And during the morning of Wednesday, November 7th, the Riverview Pilot Club will deliver an assortment of bagels, fruit, cheeses, and smiles and care to these deserving individuals with the hope that it will show them how much we care for their service and make their day a little brighter. Thank you all so much.
The consent agenda, would any of the commissioners like anything pulled separately and heard? Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to vote no without comment on F1, and I would like to poll for discussion F8, F15, F16, and F17.
Give me the poll numbers one more time, sir.
Sure, Madam Chair. F8, F15, F16, and F17.
F17, and you'd like to vote, I'm sorry, vote no on which one?
Madam Chair, F1, no without any comment.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'd like to entertain a comment to approve all the items except F8, 15, 16, and 17. Commissioner Isnardi, did you want to?
I was just going to concur. I wanted some of those items polled, but if, I mean unless there's further discussion, I also wanted to vote no on an item.
Which one?
That's okay. That would be item F1.
F1 also.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve all the items except 8, 15, 16, and 17 with Commissioners Isnardi and Tabaya with a nay vote. Motion by Commissioner Barfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. We'll move into item 8. Commissioner Tabaya, you're pulling this one, sir.
Yes, Madam Chair. Great. I almost missed you there in that jacket, Ian. Appreciate staff diligently, sorry, implementing the board's decision on how to rate these organizations. On the 19th of December, before we set our new criteria, we line itemed out Meals on Wheels as a separate expenditure for $60,000. It clearly met the new criteria that we set out. That was basic need, obviously being food, and highly effective and efficient, which we saw that we got a return on our investment. Last December, when we line itemed out, Commissioner Smith, who is actually probably the most involved with this organization, expressed his opinion that the organization should be treated like every other CBO, and I totally agree. I think Meals on Wheels fits perfectly into this rubric, and rather than line item it out, I think it is best to approve it as part of the CBO to be funded, which guarantees funding through 2021 while being honest about what it is, a charity. In order to accomplish this, I propose reverting these 10 organizations to current funding levels. Let me be clear, none of the projects that are currently on this list would see a drop in funding from last year's level, so I have a spreadsheet out there. For instance, Brevard Alzheimer's Association. Last year, they received $42,000 in funding. I would like to keep it at $42,000. This would be a $14,000 difference. When you add up those differences, it aggregates to $53,706. I propose that we use this difference of $53,706 as well as a little bit of the general fund, that $60,000 that we were using to make up the difference, so Meals on Wheels would be fully funded. This would save $53,706 for the general fund that we could use for other purposes. I think it's very important with the potential impending reduction in property tax revenue that we keep our eye on the ball as much as possible. This would allow us to maintain funding levels from last year as well as free up a little dollars that we can use at our discretion as we move forward. I'd be more than willing to take any questions on this plan, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners? Commissioners Isnardi?
Initially, when I brought this item up to be, I guess, line item separate from the budget was sort of to ensure the funding. Now, if you remember during budget workshop discussions, I think I made myself pretty clear that I didn't think that we needed to be doing CBO funding at all, only because, again, you know, without sounding cliche, you're picking winners and losers of a charity soup bowl of people that need funding, and all worthy causes, of course, but, you know, perhaps just the solution is automatically funding it, because I see the value, again, I think, at least for myself, food, shelter, and there's things on here like behavioral health, there's daycare, there's things on there, to me, very important, no doubt, but I think food, shelter, I mean, those things are primary needs, and I know all of these are needs. Again, I don't want to diminish what every agency does, and you could argue that we could add 15 more on here. I would prefer if we're going to do that, that if that's the case, then we automatically allocate the $60,000 towards Meals on Wheels if we're going to go that route, or we just reduce the total amount of the award, $60,000, to offset it. You know, I know you have $53,000 here, but, I mean, if we're going to modify the funding, I assume that that's what we were going to do anyway, sort of, when we brought it up, that we were going to reduce the CBO accordingly. I know that we did that as a separate item for that year, but that was because we weren't going to fund them, so.
Commissioners, the current budget does include the $60,000 as a separate line item. I think what Commissioner Tabaya is proposing is to eliminate that and replace it with part of this funding. So it is currently in this year's budget, and it would be a recurring expense, because that's the direction the board had. This proposal is actually reducing by the 20%, and the Community Action Board came up with a proposal that was included in the agenda request, and we provided you the history of where it was the prior year, and Commissioner Tabaya is just providing an alternate proposal. That's what I understand is occurring.
Yeah, and I totally get that, and I totally see that, but rather if we're going to, because, you know, and again, we can argue about whether or not we should be doing the CBO funding at all. It was the board that decided to reduce it 20% each year, but that also doesn't tie the hands of this or any board in the future by saying, okay, it's going to be 20 for the next three years, because we all make decisions come budget time. Now, again, I have no problem with that, at least from my perspective, but I would rather us reduce the CBO funding as a whole exactly, I mean, similar to what's proposed here, if that's going to be the case.
If I could, I believe what we did when we put our budget together for the department is we did not do a budget increase of $60,000 for Meals on Wheels. When we add them as a line item in the budget, normally that 20% reduction in CBO would have been about $106,000, so we only, we reduced basically by $46,000, and so it is actually CBO dollars that are currently funding, because we did not do an increase in our budget transfer of general fund.
Okay. Commissioner Barfield?
First off, we passed the budget, and this was in the budget. Now we're bringing up change in the budget that we have not even had in place a month. I don't think that's the right way to go. I, as far as the Meals on Wheels funding, as is any of these, we need to look, we need to look at what the benefits are to the county and look at it from a perspective of not only the moral, ethical side, but look at the standpoint of what is the cost savings that the county sees from this. And the good examples, Meals on Wheels, I gave this before, where $60,000 is turned in through matching grants to over $1 million, but the most important thing is they visit those who are shut-ins, those who are in getting their meals strictly from this. Now, if they weren't there, they would be in long-term care, and long-term care is, ends up being paid by Medicaid. Medicaid is an unfunded mandate that we have to pay every year. We don't know exactly how much that'll be, but it's based on the pool of how many people we have on Medicaid and what it costs. So the point is this, every time someone can stay in their home longer, that's at least $120,000 a year that Medicaid, our tax dollars, are not paying to put them in long-term care. So every one of these have to have, and I've talked to Ian about this, we have to show where it's a benefit from morally and ethically, but also that it's going to save us money, just like Commissioner Tabaya is saying. We're going to be hit with money. We're going to still be getting hit with these unfunded mandates, correct, Ian? They come every year. We don't know how much they'll be. So the point is, anytime we can put some money into a service, we're contracting for a service that can help alleviate suffering and save our county money, we're going to have to put out, we need to do that. And I believe a lot of these do, that you look at them and see, but the Meals on Wheels needs to be a funded line item every year. It needs to, because the fact, it reaches people that are the shut-ins, and it makes a lot of sense to prevent the Medicaid costs that we're going to have to pay. So I'm, we're just leaving it with the $60,000, a separate line item, funded every year. We don't have to fight over this every year. Well, y'all won't have to fight over it every year, but the fact is, the way these things are, a charity is a charity, but these are nonprofit organizations who provide contractable services, which we use, a number of nonprofit organizations we contract services to, and that's exactly what this is.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, and it's probably my fault here and the poor explanation. I'm not advocating cutting Meals on Wheels one penny. I'm just advocating that we shift excess funding, funding above last year's level, that difference, the difference in the chart over there, into what we're currently covering for Meals on Wheels. So in other words, there is no change. Meals on Wheels would still see the $60,000 in the budget, it would just come from a different place. It would allow us to then free up $53,706 in additional revenue for general fund. So again, I'm not advocating for or against the CBO. I think we went through that discussion, I think on a 3 to 2 vote, we decided to decrease it 20% a year. I don't, I'm not advocating changing that at this rate. I am just saying the funding levels for the organizations listed here that are above 2017 levels, above 2017 levels, just that difference, goes to Meals on Wheels, so they have, so they get fully funded as well. So I, sorry, I did not mean to get into the CBO cut. I did not mean to get into the CBO cut argument. I didn't mean to get into the merits of one of these. Another, this is just a funding mechanism that'll free up $53,706 that we can use for anything that we want, whether it be employee raises, whether it be increasing Meals on Wheels. This just allows us to free up $53,706, and that is the plan, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I'd like to commend Commissioner, excuse me, Tabaya. I think this is a real thinking outside the box. I think this is a real thinking outside the box idea, and I like it. So I would support it. If he wants to make a motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, I want to weigh in, and Commissioner Tobias, I appreciate what you brought. I kind of understand it. We actually raised the amount of money we're putting out because we did line item Meals on Wheels. Wish I would have caught that when we were doing it. But on that point, though, I really think we need to keep Meals on Wheels as a special line item. I don't know what we should maybe have a discussion with the rest of this. I know we're trying to wean these organizations off. I think even just keeping the same funding level, if not increase, and it might have been the route, and then just had the money move across in the budget. But I still want to hear what you guys are thinking about. But with Meals on Wheels, even if you get out of the benevolent way of thinking about it, you put in 60,000 with county funds, and we have the federal government pouring a billion dollars into our economy, and that's a pretty good return on investment. And, you know, it gets the food going, people purchase the food, and it's just, it's just good for our economy to do that, not to even mention keeping, as Commissioner Barfield said, all those reasons, people in their homes, and that saves us tons of federal tax dollars. You know, I've been there with a lot of elderly people, and the amount of money we spend on someone when they get out of their homes, it's a lot of funds. So anytime we can do this, it's a very good item to have. So I'm never going to be in favor of moving Wheels and Meals on Wheels out of the line item, just, you know, our elderly, one, but two, the impact to our economy is pretty substantial. Commissioner Barfield?
My question is this, the next year, where will it be staffed, where will it be funded from, Meals on Wheels? Will we go through this again?
While these dollars are CBO and they are in Ian's budget, they are general fund dollars.
They are general fund dollars. So again, though, next year, you're looking at $204,000 available. The year after that, you're looking at about $102,000.
Although, in our budget, we did put the 60,000 from the general fund that's in there now, and that was, we, our intention was to continue it as a reoccurring line item, 60,000, because that's the board direction that we had received.
Commissioner Snarty? I think I was just going to restate what Mr. Batte said. I mean, we opted to do the resolution to make sure we isolated that, and for many of the reasons that Commissioner Barfield spoke of, it was, you know, I understand matching funds, and you see it, you know, not just in construction and nonprofits and in several different ways, we have matching funds with the state. This is a requirement for them to do their program, is to have that local match. And not to mention, aside from keeping elderly in their homes, I mean, these are our parents, these are our grandparents. And, you know, if we can keep them out of nursing homes, you can talk to fire rescue, one of the number one calls they get isn't to nursing homes, and that's another expense that we incur. So, I mean, I'll never be okay with cutting Meals on Wheels, and it's not because I'm admittedly partial to old people, it's because I think that it's fiscally a smart thing to do, and I think it's morally and ethically the right thing to do. So, I mean, again, we can shift the 60,000 out of the CBO. I assumed that's sort of what we were doing, but my intention of initially bringing that resolution forward was to isolate Meals on Wheels from having to be a part of the whole selection process and have to claw for funding and have to compete, only because, again, the return is so much larger. So I don't have a problem reducing it as far as, you know, making sure the monies line up, because it is all general fund money, and I get that. But I want to make sure that in the future, I mean, obviously, any commissioner can bring anything that they want to the board, but in the future, I don't want, at least I'll never support repealing that line item funding that we agreed to as a board before. So that's a whole separate issue.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. And that is an issue for a later date. This would not require the line item to be removed. To be clear, you know, that the line item would not be removed. This just would be dollars shifted from excess of the programs that I have listed into cover the 60. It all comes from the same place. It's all general fund. So there, the line item would still be there next year, and then, as we always do, and go through the budget, we can have that discussion next year. But to be clear, we're not removing, my plan does not remove any line items. It just is a shift from excess dollars over to cover the Meals on Wheels, which would see no loss in funding, one way or another. So that's the plan. I'd, you know, I'd like to make a motion once everyone gets the opportunity to discuss.
Mr. Barfield?
Okay, I've had my question, my concerns addressed, and I'm okay with the D3 proposal.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, passes five zero.
Commissioners, I apologize. Could I just ask for some clarification? So next year, when we look at the $204,000 that's available, is the idea that I would reduce out $60,000 automatically and distribute the remaining $140,000 between these 10 agencies?
I would think that we're making Meals on Wheels a line item, and we're trying to do the 20% on the rest of the amount of funds. So 60,000 isn't getting a reduction, so I think you're going to have to do a mathematical proportion on the rest of the items to get them.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out, is it, because, in other words, this year, what we did is we did a $60,000 line item, and then there was an expectation, there was a $306,000 available in CBO. If I understand the motion correctly, instead of having 306,000, it's 240,000 distributed, 60,000 or the 53,000 for Meals on Wheels. So if that's the same for next year, it means there's 140,000 available for the CBO agencies that are remaining. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's the way I would want it.
I will say that it might accelerate the end of the CBO process because, you know, just like you had a straight across the board, you're looking at $14,000 per agency, and I don't know what they can do with that. One agency is only getting about $5,700 because last year, they were the final agency, and they got the dregs last year, they weren't able to get the full percentage. So it should, it's going to change it a little bit from what you say.
Maybe we can discuss that when the time comes up, because I would think the 20% proportional from this and Meals on Wheels gets general fund later.
I was hoping to not have to keep bringing this back to you.
Yeah, I think that's going to take a little bit longer right now, so. Okay, thank you, sir. All right.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. The motion also included the item number two, which is authorize the chair and county manager to execute the agreements.
Commissioner Barfield, was that part of your motion, sir?
Yeah. Just making sure, thank you.
Okay. All right, and just so that everybody knows that they're doing this, as Commissioner Tobias had stated, all of the items that we funded last year are not getting reductions. Actually, this year, they're receiving the same amount of funds. So, all right, we're moving into item 15. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. And with such good teamwork here, I'm going to skip discussion on this one and just make a motion to approve F-15.
Okay, I have a motion to approve F-15. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, passes five zero. Item 16.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item requests that we acknowledge that the Cocoa CRA is extending its CRA to the statutory maximum of 60 years, from sunsetting in 2027 to 2041. Apparently, the 46 years was not long enough to redevelop the area of about .45 square miles. If anyone has wondered why I've been so critical of CRAs, this is a textbook example of the abuse that these agencies perpetuate on county taxpayers. Commissioner Smith has stated that the biggest problem with CRAs is that they never go away. Nothing illustrates this point more than this unilateral action. This is not, this is not a courtesy notification by a municipality on something that could have a marginal impact on the county. This is a slap in the face which will cost county taxpayers through TIF payments $7.5 million. On May 9, 2017, the board voted unanimously to ask the municipalities, quote, "bring CRAs to closure prior to the statutory sunset dates." Indeed, indeed, Cocoa has denied to extend their plan to the, decided to extend their plan to the statutory maximum. Making things worse, this comes at a time when the county is facing the possibility of a $12 million annual reduction to its revenue, including $7 million, which is general revenue alone where CRAs are funded. To say this least, to say the least, this puts the county even further into a situation of financial hardship. This CRA is pre-charter, which means we lack all authority to take meaningful action to prevent this continued reckless spending. Thankfully, according to the county attorney's office, the county did include a provision in the creation of some CRAs which allow us to take action when it is in the fiscal interests of the county. The CRA, the CRA over which we have some authority include two in the city of Cocoa. While preventing further waste by these two CRAs will only make a small dent in the $7.5 million of the plan by extending this CRA, it's a rational start in the beginning of the process of reining in the reckless spending where legally possible. I will be introducing measures to accomplish this goal in a couple weeks. I just wanted to pull this to say again, I know I've said it twice, this action will cost future boards through TIF payments, and that's assuming that there is no meaningful tax increase in the neighborhood of $7.5 million. While I understand this is in consent, this is something that I think deserved to be brought to light, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobias. Commissioner Snarty, comment, ma'am?
Yeah, and I was going to pull this item too, and again, I'm more to repeat what you said, but in fiscal year 1819, it's $540,000. And the size of the CRA, most certainly, I mean, if you can't get the job done in a reasonable amount of time, I mean, what is, what is the purpose? You make every other CRA who's doing good work look foolish. I mean, 60 years for this CRA, and they wonder why we have been so scrutinizing of these redevelopment agencies. So again, I think it's disgusting. I think they took advantage, and I think that they're hurting all of us and the rest of the county that would find better use of those funds with infrastructure. So I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, we, I believe we just need a motion to prove that we acknowledge that it came to our attention. Motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, passes five zero. Item 17.
Thank you, Madam Chair. More CRA funds. While I appreciate the fact that Palm Bay is returning this money, it's nine years late. Under Chapter 163 of Florida statute, it is legal, it is the legal responsibility of the governing board of the CRA to return certain unexpected funds of the CRA to the county at the end of each fiscal year. The Palm Bay CRA has not performed its legal responsibilities as agreed upon as the past board allowed the CRA to be created. These funds should have been returned to us at the latest in 2009. Once again, this just shows why the board needs to fulfill its oversight responsibilities for taxpayer funds, as it is clear the only way to do this is to exercise its full legal rights to assume authority when possible. Again, I just wanted to bring it to light. I think this probably came about through the county manager's office and oversight. But again, while I think it's great that we receive these funds, they're almost 10 years late, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. I have a couple comments also. I asked a lot of questions yesterday from Jill, but I missed asking this one question. County manager, is this the correct amount that was to be returned? Did you guys do the math on that?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. I have been speaking with the administrator for the CRA. We received notice approximately four, five weeks ago that these funds were coming to the county, and the county did receive the check for $103,000 and a resolution. In that resolution, there was a request that the county execute and consider executing a settlement agreement with the city relative to these funds. Both the county manager's office and the county attorney reviewed that. We did not make that part of this, what's before the board today. We just asked the board to accept this money and then to dedicate it for infrastructure. The issue that you just raised is, was the amount of the $103,000, the proper amount? And we are looking at that because there was a distribution between the TIF payments that the city made and the TIF payments that the county made during the period in question back to 2008. And we really need to review that, and we do have that representative from Palm Bay here, and we need to look at it because we're not certain that that, the amount of the distribution that I believe was recommended by the city attorney's office when they looked at it is the right amount, and there may be a differential in that payment going back there. So the fact that we're not, we did not offer a settlement, we have the ability to have that dialogue with them and resolve any outstanding issue as to was the proportionate distribution of the TIF payments to the city and to the county, correct?
Okay, so we're just receiving the funds today, and you guys are going to work through the math and tidy it up, correct?
Right, that would be our intention at this point.
Well, just another thought with this, and I agree, Commissioner Tobias, we probably should have had these funds returned many years ago. So I think on that note, we should also consider, it's been sitting in an account, and if it was in our account, we would have earned some interest. So I asked you this yesterday, Ms. Jill, and actually, the interest rates were so low. But I asked you if you would do a future value and give us a number of interest rates. I think it should come back to the county because it's been sitting in somebody's interest-bearing account. So I think that would be a fair recommendation of this board that we go ahead and request the interest. And did you run those numbers, ma'am?
I did, Commissioner. Just looking back to fiscal year 2010, 2011, the consolidated interest earning rates have ranged between 0.43% and 1.07%. And so, you know, depending on how far the board would like to go back, we could certainly, certainly run those numbers. But just going back to 2010, 2011, and compounding that interest on the $103,000, you'd be looking at around $5,800 in interest.
Okay, so I think that might be appropriate, too, Commissioners, if we look into having those funds returned, because they were earning interest somewhere. So I think that's county interest. And Commissioner Snarty?
Yes, Ms. Chairwoman, do you mind if I have the Bayfront person? Do you mind coming up, James? I'd like to hear a little bit about the history. Now, you and I spoke with this, but, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was the city that found this error and the city that initiated returning the funds. Now, of course, if they were due back to the county, we obviously appreciate it, but, I mean, can you talk a little bit about how this was, I guess, figured out that you have this money back?
Sure.
The Evans history is quite extensive.
Sir, if you would, give me your name for the...
Sir, James Marshall, I'm the administrator for the Bayfront Community Redevelopment Agency. Good morning, thank you for having me here and be able to answer some of these questions. This item was discovered by myself at the city. We had, when I took the job in 2000, late 2015, it became clear that there were some thoughts about the Evans Center project, this is where that fund was, that was an item that was passed city council back in late 2008. So that project really was founded about that time. But literally, if you think about it, it wouldn't, the project would not be due, remember, you have a three-year period of time in order to get that project done. Case law provides that, and there's some case law examples out there where you have up to five years. But to Commissioner Tobias' point, you won't have an issue with nine years, eight years, or seven years. So when you look at our annual report, annual report for this particular project, it really didn't show up until really 2012, 2013. So when I came on board, it was commonly believed that it was a promise, that there was actually no funds actually dedicated to this project. In other words, the organization had to be able to raise a certain amount of money, and then those funds would be matched by the CRA at the time. So the 250,000 would be commensurate if they were to hit their objectives. Then each and every year, their board would come before ours and then say where they're at in their fundraising. And each year, they were always substantially behind. And those were, you know, issues that the city can't control and so forth. But when it became clear in 2017 that this project actually had not construction funds, which were held in a bond account, for example, but actual... which were held in a bond account, for example, but actual TIF dollars, I took it to our legal counsel and asked them specifically about whether or not this needs to be refunded and how we go about doing that. And, and of course, our legal counsel basically said, in an abundance of caution, it'd be best to go ahead and refund those dollars and then start the project over, assuming the, the Evans Center organization is able to meet their requirements, and, and of course, they have since then. But I know, I talked to Commissioner Tabaya last year about this, when, when legal counsel was starting to really dig into this and really identify if this is going to actually probably happen. Within a day of me hearing that this is probably where we're going to go, assuming council were to support it and leadership were to support it, I mentioned to Commissioner Tabaya and Commissioner Ms. Nardi as well, that, that would be coming. And it's taken quite a bit of time in order to get that done, but nevertheless, it did get done. So it was, it was on our actions that we, we did our own audit, basically, going through these processes, be able to make sure that we're in compliance with Florida statute.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Okay, so, as I understand it, the monies weren't used for that long period of time, but Palm Bay discovered the error on their own, so I don't think we should punish them for that, for all those years going back. However, since the monies, we knew the money, they knew the money was available November of 17, if we're going to say that the interest should be incurred as part of the deal, then I think we should go back to November of 17. Because I think to go back further than that would be counterproductive.
My only thought on that, sir, is that it's been our money just sitting in their account, and it's been earning interest. So they're really just giving us back what's ours, because it would have been back in our account if they would have found it in the audit in a more timely manner. Again, I, I don't want to punish you for that, and I'm sure we're stepping it up some with our audits and CRAs, and I'm glad you did and you found it. But that's really been our money sitting in their account earning interest, so it's really our money that interests money. I'm not trying to take from them or cause punishment.
Well, and I'm, I acknowledge that, and I understand that, but I think that we should be patting them on the back for finding it, because we didn't find it.
Yeah, but maybe they should have found it back in...
So, I think in the interest of appreciation, that, again, this is just my opinion, but in appreciation of the fact that they discovered the problem, they're willing to accept the fact that it wasn't their money, they were going to give it back to us, they sought legal help from the city attorney, that was last November, whatever the reasons are that it took them this long to get back, 11 months, you know, is neither here nor there at this point. The error was discovered, the money was available in November. If we're going to charge them interest, then I think that that should be the starting point. That's my, that's my thought.
I believe the money was probably available back in 2011 because they haven't spent these funds. It's our money, it's just been sitting in their account earning interest. So I believe that it's, certainly, sir, but I believe this is money that's ours, Commissioner Smith, that's just been sitting in their account earning interest. That's why I'm thinking the interest really should come back to you.
Except for the fact, my point is that had they not discovered it, it would still be sitting there.
But they probably should have discovered that a few years ago, so I, I just...
And I think that goes to the point that Mr. Tabaya made, was that we're not doing an adequate job of watching over these CRAs.
Well, I, I don't know if that's true with all of them, but, you know, we found the error, and I'm very thankful for that. I think in negotiation, you should have probably brought forth the interest funds too, but as an accountant, it makes sense to me.
That, of course, and as a finance person as well, I thought of the same thing and had the same thought, but under Florida statute 163, 387, it doesn't provide for interest at all. In fact, it opens Pandora's box, and I'll say this, we've been in a period of what we call ZERP, zero interest rate policy, for quite some time. We've never really been in a prolonged period of time of raising interest rates, rising interest rates. And as you know how investments are done under our investment policy statement with both, actually, the county has one, as well as the city, and those funds are actually invested. Realize in an up, if we have rising interest rates, you have bond values that typically fall. We've actually, our, our fund managers have benefited from what we call down slope yield as the yield has been dropping. In other words, we get capital gains on the bonds, which is part of the return that she was mentioning, probably .41. That's not necessarily a savings account rate. So, for example, if, let's say, in a future situation, if we were to make precedent on this, and assuming Florida statute even allows this, what would end happening is that if you're going to share an interest rate, interest, you also have to share in the losses. So at some point down the road, if there's ever a situation like this, let's say the bond fund that's in the, in our investments, and the CRAs are allowed to invest, let's say that happens, what are you going to do with the losses? Let's say there's a $2,000 bond loss. So right now, we're in a period of increasing interest rates, and you can see on some of our balance sheets already across the board, you're starting to see, you know, you know, small half a percent losses in bond valuations. So what do you, it's hard to tell, you have to segment the money, how much was in a money market, how much was actually held in a three-year or two-year investment account, and would you be willing to share in those losses? So, but Florida statute's pretty clear, it says, return the money, it's not necessarily, it doesn't have any area on, in terms of interest.
Okay, maybe, I'm going to need some time to digest that and look at that part. I've, I've done it completely from the accounting side of this, so I will have to get with legal and ask them these questions later, and, and I don't know if it's going to involve looking at y'all's interest, I don't want to go there for $5,000, but anyways, I'm, I'm still more leaning towards that I think if it was sitting in our, our account and it would be turned timely, we would have been making these types of interest amounts. And it's just me doing due diligence for the county, because that's my main priority here, and so I was elected to do, I mean, county manager.
And then the cities, and of course, the city itself would also be entitled to interest. The city then would want to charge interest, and then, of course, there's been settlements...
For, for the money we had?
Yeah, for the, our, the city's portion. Remember, when you have TIF funds that are returned, they're to return to the taxing authorities, such as the commission, such as the city.
From your CRA, between your city, of course.
Back to the city. So, the city received a payment of $147,000, which is their proportional share, they would be technically entitled to such. So again, this is Florida policy, and if, I think it's a great idea, I think, as you know, CRAs are and continue to be talked about at the Florida legislature, and it's my, an item that maybe should be included in future, in future revisions on that, but as it is under Florida statute right now, it's just return the funds to the taxing authorities.
Okay, sir.
And I do believe we're on the same page, I'm looking at, was the proportionate rate correct, and we can make an adjustment on that?
Sure, absolutely.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I didn't mean to be critical anyway of Mr. Marshall. This happened prior to Mr. Marshall getting in. I'll weigh in on the interest. I think Commissioner Smith is absolutely correct. I think that the interest, one way or another, amounts to a couple thousand dollars and probably isn't worth staff time to, to go through it. I think, I, I don't want to lose the forest for the trees. Palm Bay's CRA went through audits, we've gone through audits, and we never caught this, and this is not a small, my, my office went through this, okay? Billy back there went through this, okay? This is $100,000 that through the numerous audits that you went under, through, through statute pertaining, and that, that, that we went through, we did not catch this. It's because we are doing the wrong audits. I've brought this up in the past, we have evidence of one CRA that no longer exists, we now have evidence of another CRA. Again, Mr. Marshall, I should have said the exact opposite, thank you for bringing this forward. I think that we need to go out and seek experts who can look at statute, because the audits that we do don't look to make sure that the way that the, the money is spent is consistent with statute. This was not, so please don't take this as any negative. Again, thank you for coming forward, bringing that to our attention. That was part of the reason that I pulled it, is, is, is pointing out that we have a good relationship here, that you're willing to come and, and bring that to us. So, but please, can we get some experts on this, so we don't have to rely on, on, on the goodwill of CRAs to, to, to bring the resources back to, back to the county? That's, that's my point, and I would, again, go with Commissioner Smith on whether it's $500 or $5,000, I don't think we should punish Palm Bay for acting in the best interest of, of county taxpayers.
Thank you, sir, and just to clarify again, it's not a matter of punishing, in my head, if I set the funds in a count and it's earning interest, and I realized I needed to give those funds back a while ago, I would have returned it with interest. So Commissioner Tabaya, that's, that's my point on that, it's not a punishment item, and I think Commissioner Smith, you understand that also, what, what I'm trying to say. So, anyways, we're at the point here, we've had a lot of discussion, and I think right now, city manager, you want to approve the acknowledgement of receiving these funds, correct, sir?
That's right, if you approve the agenda item, and then we will proceed to resolve the issue of the, the amount.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. I have no more lights, can I have a motion to approve the...
I'd make a motion that we accept the $103,000, because I always like to do something when we get money.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, and Commissioner Tabaya, you made the second, sir? Second by Commissioner Tabaya, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. We are moving into public comments. Mr. Tovey?
I wrote on the card about the lagoon. First, I want to say if a kid takes a candy bar from a store, it's not a mistake, he gets charged, and the rest of his life gets ruined or imploded. Guy gets in a fight at school, there's no mistake, they get charged and then go through a bunch of stuff the rest of their lives. County people make mistakes, and they, oh, forget this, and they, no, they should be held accountable, no matter what it's for, and how, how can these people being voted into their seats being just, oh, well, it's my mistake, at $100,000, there's people... Anyways, it was about the lagoon. And again, secondly, I wanted to mention about the leaky water fountain out there, it's a safety hazard for one, and I shed light on things that nobody else does, and, but it's money being dripped down the drain, like our budget and the rest of our, because nobody cares about it, running out of time. I, I think we should landscape like the Holiday Inn, the one in Vegas, which doesn't use water, and it's totally ziriskaped, and there's no runoff to go, and it's all natural. If you've ever been out there, you'll see that, and it's against the law for them to run their irrigation and everything else, and if they do it, they get charged, or you do it here, oh, it's okay, and we'll get, but Mr. Tovey does it, throw the book on him. I've had a headache since 2004 from being dragged down from a negligent driver, being dragged down the road. I'm not in a good mood, if that explains my disposition. And 2004, four years ago, I got hit again on my bike while I was going to file the response on a fifth district court of appeals. That aggravated, and I incurred more damages. I'm not in a good mood anytime, not to my family, not to the president, yay, the lagoon. Some of the things that I point out is, things that don't get mentioned or overlooked, or... But we used to be an orange grove state. No more, no more agriculture, and all that extra water that was being absorbed and processed is being gone. The whole, a lot of people was agriculture, I understand there's agriculture now, but, and the mangrove depletion, those are two of the biggest impacts of the lagoon. And I, I was prepared, but last, this morning, I got broken into, every day I have some kind of, and these are animals that do this, they're not held accountable, they don't know any better. Why should these people who have been college educated and all this training and all this make mistakes, and they're not held accountable? Well, why does it continue? Because, oh, it's okay, it's not okay. Have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. We're moving into public hearings, item H1, tiny homes.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a request for the Board of County Commissions to consider, or I should say, conduct a first public hearing to approve revisions to Chapter 62, Article 6 zoning regulations to create tiny house planning developments and to amend zoning classifications to allow for permitted uses with conditions for tiny homes and tiny homes on wheels to allow them to be permanent residences. You may remember, as we brought this item forward to you all on the, on the 14th, when we did the legislative intent, there was a couple of things that the board asked us to ensure that we captured in the ordinance, and those were that we did the PUD piece, which we have done, and we have brought forward, that's here. It was also that we allow tiny homes in agricultural zoning classifications that were two and a half acres and above, we have done that, we include the tiny homes in the RV, I'm sorry, not RV, but manufactured home zoning classifications, we have included those as well. We have created a permitted with conditions, those conditions are that they have two and a half acres, that they contain a minimum of 120 square foot, that when they're placed on a residential property, that they are the primary residential structure, that the accessory structures associated with a tiny home would be limited to 600 square feet, and that they obtain approval from their neighbors as they move forward with the tiny home development. Yesterday, this item was brought forward to the LPA, and they made the recommendation that we modify one of the conditions, and that would be to allow the tiny homes up to 120 square, I should say, as a minimum of 120 square feet, and allow them up to the standard minimum of the zoning classification now. So that would be if the zoning classification, for instance, has a 900 square foot minimum, anything from 120 feet to that 900 feet would be considered a tiny home, and then anything over that would just fall under the standard zoning and the minimum classified, or the minimum standards. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, comments?
What would be the impact of doing that from a, from your standpoint?
So I think what they, what, what happened there is that if somebody came in with a 900 square foot home, and that was right at the minimum, then it would not fall under the permitted with conditions. So if it were, because that would be the minimum of the standard zoning classification. So I think it's just a way to ensure that if they get larger than what we would consider, that we create a window that would capture them and make sure that they meet those conditions.
Commissioners, this is the first hearing. I have one card for questions only, so, um, commissioners, Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you. I want to, again, state, thank staff for all their hard work. Normally, we look to steal other ordinance or, you know, plans from other counties, and that just didn't exist here. I think we're going to not get 100% right, but people will be following our lead as we move forward. I think that this was a good work product from this board, and I think that the, the staff took it, ran with it, and made it even better. I expect this to come through changes as we learn, you know, as, as the marketplace dictates, you know, what may be better, but especially with the PUD, what, what you did with the PUD, giving so much flexibility to developers, I thought was absolutely wonderful. So I'm fully going to support this, and I just wanted to commend you for being the leader, being the leader on this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo those thoughts. When this first came up, I looked at this and I thought, this is a real quagmire. I mean, there's, we just didn't have anything to relate to with this. And somehow, you guys have navigated this, and you've put statutes and all the permitted conditions in here, and it's just, to me, it's an amazing piece of work, and I can't see any loopholes, because that was my biggest concern. What happens if a, if I, I get a constituent that calls my office and says, I got a tiny home in the backyard of my neighbor, what are we going to do with that? Well, now we have an answer. So, I'm very much in support of this, and I thank, thank your whole department for all your hard work.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioner Ms. Nardi?
I just, I'll echo and say thank you guys for all your hard work, Erin and Ted. I just think it's great for our community, I think it's going to be a nice option for people for affordable housing, and I think it's sort of the way things are trending with this generation. I think it's, it's the, sort of turned into a movement, so I'm excited that we're going to allow this in our community and in our county.
Do we have a motion to approve this item? Motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Tabaya, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. Moving into item two.
Was, the motion included the planning, the LPA recommendation?
Oh, yeah, including the LPA recommendation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second hold, and we're through. Second hold and we're through.
Item F2, this, it is requested that the Board of County Commissioners conduct a first public hearing to approve revisions to Chapter 62, Article 6 zoning regulations to remove the maximum density requirement for hotels and motels, except for in the Merritt Island redevelopment district, which will maintain a maximum density of 30 units per acre. This item has gone back to the LPA. The LPA heard it yesterday and the updated recommendation from them was to remove the maximum density in the Merritt Island district, and that was a unanimous vote. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. This is the first public hearing, first reading. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you very, thank you very much. As you recall, this was initially brought through with a carve-out for just my district or just the district I represent. And I was not necessarily in favor of parceling up Brevard County. The county is unique in many regards. I hear that Commissioner Pritchett, there's an area of Titusville that are prone to flooding for reasons unique to that area. We hear from Commissioner Isnardi that there are issues unique to Palm Bay, such as high concentrations of septic tanks. We hear Commissioner Smith pointed out many times, Viera is unique due to the experience rapid commercial and residential development. My area is unique. There's, there's an island in my district in which you can't get to by car. You have to go take a boat. So I think it falls, I think it falls flat that, you know, we have a unique, unique district or a unique, unique area. And I think the precedent was just set on this last one. We have boards out there of experts to make recommendations to us. And a board just did make a recommendation to us. The Building Construction Advisory Committee wisely pointed out, a redevelopment area are the ones that most are in need of attracting economic redevelopment. The sole purpose of the BCAC, which was created by this resolution, is to advise us on matters like this. Mr. Moya, in particular, stated, and I quote, "It is contrary to standard planning process to have a controlled density in a redevelopment agency." BCAC, again, as Ted pointed out, voting unanimously to recommend removing the Myra carve-out. So after discussion, I would like to make a motion to adopt the recommendation of the Building Construction Advisory Committee.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Barfield?
Well, first off, we look at a lot of things to do with what Merritt Island is different. In fact, D2, I think, D2 has overall 30.4% of all the BU1, which is in future land UCC classification. D5 has 3.9, almost 4%, D4 has 21%, D3 has almost 3%, D2 overall has 30% and D1 has 18.6%. 22% of those properties are in, say, the Meyer district, but really it's the Courtney 520 corridors on Merritt Island. And properties along State Road 3 corridor frontage were impacted severely by when the state widened those roads. And it's a real struggle to make the minimum standards for parking or meeting loading zones, setbacks, landscape, and ADA requirements. It's next to impossible to do that. They have all these numbers of properties there. It's more than anywhere else in the county. And it's locked because of the island status. It's always been the effort to manage not only the density, but the intensity. And we can't, it's difficult to do that there because of the lax walkability and the multimodal transportation is very difficult. Commissioner Tobias says, you know, it's unique, we're unique, and septic tanks, we're unique in different areas. Well, it's unique here, but you can't change it. And there's no way to change it. We don't have areas where we can put sidewalks. There's so many different issues and it's already maximized at the amount of traffic that it can handle. So adding any of these other types of facilities, of motels, they could put it on where a gas station is and have four homes and make it a motel. It's unique in the fact that it doesn't happen everywhere else. The comp plan seeks to create the commercial nodes and because Merritt Island is a destination for shoppers from the mainland, they have to use these commercial properties from the beaches. They come in. Where are these people parking their vehicles, recreation? It's a major impact. I mean, I tell you, it's, it is unique, but there's certain issues because what will happen, and if I get outnumbered on this, down the road, we'll see what happens. And I don't think it'll be nice because of the intensity of Courtney Parkway cannot be widened. It cannot be anything else done to it. And we're going to be stuck with that. 520 is the same way, but Courtney is the worst part. So just within the district, there's 705 properties that meet, I mean, that we're talking about. So I'm opposed to taking the Merritt Island area out of it. And I just see the intents, what's going to happen down the road.
Thank you, sir. My way in on this is I don't think one size does fit all. And when we put the zoning together, I think it was to do good for the county and to fix the density on a ordinance we put through a while ago as far as able to build smaller hotel rooms. But on light of that, when we do this, I don't want to cause harm. And I don't live in the Merritt Island area, but, you know, we've been there, you know, quite often. And I think Courtney is, is very susceptible to be harmed by certain types of this development. And you know what? It's a place that could possibly have some problems if this happened in that area. My area, I thought through it, I don't think this will cause any harm to my area. Therefore, you know, I don't have any problems with it as far as District 1 of anything that I've identified. And that's what I looked for also. So I'm totally comfortable with just pulling out this one area in the redevelopment area because you also have flooding issues on top of your density problems. No more that I would try to put something like this in that area off of Wickham Road that we've been having a lot of discussions with also. So I think if we don't carve this out, this ordinance would cause harm to that area. And Commissioners, if you have any areas like that too in your district, you know, I'm listening, but I've been through all of my district and, you know, some of it might be inconvenient, but it's not going to cause harm. So I like the proposal as it's stated. Commissioner Tobias, sir?
Thank you. I just want to be clear that we are controlling development in a redevelopment district. It is the exact opposite stated purpose of this zone. It's like telling an amusement park, we are going to limit the speed of your roller coasters. They only can go seven miles an hour. This is absolutely ridiculous. We have, we have experts. Mr. Moya stated on a quote, "It's silly to put a cap on the people who would potentially want to use the port." This could have some impact on finances, on development. And our experts here, my understanding, Mr. Moya is a licensed engineer, is telling us there could be some impacts and they could be negative. Absent of any new information, other than the fact that I'm unique, I have to go with what our experts are telling us. And I understand the, you know, everyone's got an argument, but I have to look at what the folks that we rely on, the advisory board, the same one that we sent us good stuff, not the same one, but the same process that sent us a good idea on the tiny home. So again, I just want to, I want everyone to understand that we are controlling development in a redevelopment agency. If that's the case, you know, maybe we need to look at putting an end to the redevelopment agency altogether.
Well, simply put, all we're doing is managing the density. That's what we're doing. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to get a hold of here. I mean, even redevelopment, you have to manage the density. So that's what we're trying to do here. What, I'll ask, what do you expect our impacts to be for Merritt Island versus anywhere else that would do? Is there, in your opinion?
I think that, as you mentioned, the challenges with Merritt Island, especially on Courtney and 520, is the limited space that they have in the existing parcels. So as you look at those parcels where we've already had roadway widenings and they have already have reduced setbacks, if folks were to come in there and request utilizing those structures for hotels, and that it would have to be approved with some other waivers to make them happen.
Yeah, I think when we talked about this before, I had the same concern about, you know, carving out an area. I mean, I have, there's a few areas in, at least in Palm Bay, some areas where the roads can be widened somewhere. It's just not financially feasible because it's tens of millions of dollars where any kind of development would cause that density to increase. But I don't want to restrict development because of fear of density. I mean, all these projects are going to come back to us anyway, if those, those types of hotel projects. And I don't think we need to say this area doesn't, it doesn't have to follow the same requirements as other areas. I don't think that that's fair. Because in reality, I think anybody, you know, in certain areas, and one thing that I often hear from not just Merritt Island, but some folks that live up in that area is that, you know, we want it quiet, we want it not developed, we want trees and we want other things. So I think some of it comes from fear of development. And, you know, with the proper parking and with the proper, with the proper plan, I think it can be managed. So I mean, I would be, I wouldn't be opposed to leaving it the way it was without carving out a redevelopment area.
Erin, could you address the density of what it is now and what this could cause for Merritt Island, especially, I'm talking about the Courtney corridor up to 528 and 520, you know, to Banana River?
Well, in general, we looked at the propensity of those two zoning classifications, the BU1 and the BU2 in the community commercial there. So I think we've talked about the amount of community commercial, but the BU1 and BU2 where this use at unlimited density could occur is kind of consolidated within your district along those corridors. So our analysis shows that of all of those parcels, almost 20% of the entire county is in the Myra area, not just in D2, but in Myra itself. So, you know, without doing a full-on assessment, I think the, the density of those types of uses are consolidated on fewer corridors within Myra than elsewhere in other districts.
So is that, that's probably within about three mile stretch?
Mm-hmm. It'd be about three miles on each road. But yeah, so it's definitely a large mass. So the impact is much more consolidated and so the trips are distributed in fewer ways. There's lots of infrastructure constraints that come from that consolidation of uses.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Erin, did, were you at, I'm looking at the transcript here. I don't, I just want to make sure it's accurate. The Building and Construction Advisory Committee on October 10, 2018, it lists you as a, as one of the attendees. Did you present this type of information to, to the board before they made their determination?
No, at that meeting, the item, the hotel item was presented by Rebecca. I presented the tiny house item there.
Okay.
We hadn't been asked by the district office to run any numbers about the number of properties, so we did not provide that information to that board at that time. It may or may not have changed their, their decision if they'd had more data.
Madam Chair, I'd like to change my, you know, if Commissioner Barfield would, would be supportive, and I think this may be some good information that, to get to those experts. You know, is that, is this something that, you know, Commissioner Barfield would be willing to table and let those experts get that additional information that he's gone through and done the hard work and present them and see what, what the experts say, given all of that new information that was just brought to light?
Let me ask this. We have another hearing on this or is it just this hearing?
Yes, sir. We have, it's two readings on this.
Okay. So we could fix it by the next reading?
So.
But, but the question is, when's the next Building and Construction Advisory?
It's on the 14th, so that would be coming back. If we followed that suit, then it would go back to the December 4 meeting, I believe, would be the next Board of County Commissioners that we could get it to.
[laughing].
So I'd like to move forward with it since I do have a timeframe. I have an expiration date.
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in on this a little bit. Because, and I may be making this a little bit simplistic, but without a local government agency on Merritt Island, they don't have a mayor, they don't have a city. We, the commissioner, are the responsible agents. And the D2 commissioner is the quasi-mayor. So I think it falls to us to make this decision and I think it would be wise for us to make it now. So I would make a motion to accept this as written.
Can I have a motion on the table? Do I have?
Madam Chair.
Sorry? Oh, I'm.
Yeah, I'm, no, just, I'm counting up here and I'm not counting in three. So I'm going to pull back my motion so Commissioner Smith can go forward with hers with your indulgence.
Yes, sir. Okay. I have a motion on the, I missed your motion there somehow. I know, I really apologize because I should have called this for you. Motion on the table by Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Passes 3-0. Commissioner Isnardi and Commissioner Tobias an objection. And this is first hearing, so we won't be hearing this again. Item J1.
Item J1 is a request for authorization for the Chair to execute a contract for sale and purchase and an amendment to that contract and the budgetary action that would be associated with it for the acquisition of the Colimneos property to be used as a stormwater detention pond related to the Kingsmill Aurora Phase 2 project. We had, we received two appraisals on the property. The owner opted to settle for the lower of the two appraisal amounts. The information was provided to the Land Acquisition Review Committee and we received positive feedback from all. One member had some comments and concerns and we addressed those. And so it is our recommendation that you proceed as presented.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners?
I make a motion that we approve the contract for sale and purchase of the, whatever that name is, parcel for Kingsmill Aurora Phase 2 project.
That's why I wasn't, I'm glad I wasn't making a motion. Motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item 2.
Commissioners, I'm assuming that that motion included executing the amendment as well?
Item J2 is a resolution of necessity for acquiring the last five out of 173 easements needed for the mid-reach federal shore protection project.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners?
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item 3.
This is a request for the Board to consider a special magistrate's reduction of accrued fine from $18,805 down to $5,645 and release the lien for a code enforcement case, 11CE This is, this violation was for overgrowth. It ran for.
case 11 CE 01131. This is, this violation was for overgrowth. It ran for 430 days. The new owner has made the request for the reduction down to $1,000. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, would you like to address the commission, if you'd state your name, please?
Sure. Mr. Pendle. I would just like to discuss this case a little bit further because it's not black and white. We bought this property from the prior owner. Title search was done on the prior owner, but apparently the prior owner to that was deeded over the property through an inheritance. So when we did title search, and as you know, as you buy a piece of property, you do title search on the current owner of the property. There were no liens or violations. After purchasing the property, of course, keep in mind, the property is only assessed at $10,000, which we've almost paid the $10,000, plus an additional $2,500 in additional fines and fees to Brevard County. So that's why we're asking the fine to be reduced to $1,000 versus the $20,000, which is just completely insane.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
What is your name, sir?
Pendle. P-E-N-D-L.
Mr. Pendle, this is a very compelling argument that you're making. Was that made to the magistrate?
It was, and what happened was is we missed the magistrate hearing. The, Angela actually had our wrong email address. So we missed that hearing, and that's why we had to come in front of you. The special magistrate hearing, we go in front of, if you miss your first hearing, you have to go in front of the code enforcement special magistrate hearing. They can hear it, and they suggest something, but yous could, yous are the ones who have to make the final decision, because at that point, the second hearing, since you missed the first hearing, they're not allowed to make any, any final decisions on it. But they did agree with that if this came in front of them the first time, and we didn't miss our hearing, that they would absolutely give us our reduction.
So that was their suggestion?
Absolutely, and it's in writing. Yes, sir.
Well, as the commission, as the commission knows, I'm not one to reduce fines and recommendations by the magistrate, but I think in this case, we do have an exception. So I would make a motion to accept the, what was it, $1,000? Ted, what was the, our cost?
Our cost is at $1,884 is what's remaining.
Keep in mind, sir, we did already pay $2,500, which I do have receipts for, just to be able to come in front of the, the Board.
Okay, well, my motion's going to include the $1,884, and my fellow commissioners can decide if that's a good idea or not.
I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Smith for $1,884. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. Any discussion? Commissioner Tobias?
Madam Chair, can I, can I ask staff how in the world emails are, is, you know, what's, what's the deal? How, how did we get a wrong email? Was it on our end? Was it?
Can I answer that, sir?
No, I'm asking staff on this one. Thank you, though.
So I don't have that information. I'm not sure how they would be missing, how that correspondence got dropped. It's not, it wasn't given to me. The, the information that I have shows that it does not, well, I will say, it does not say whether or not they were at the special magistrate hearing. So I don't know that I can answer that question.
Yeah, I trust Mr. Pendle here that he was not there. My concern is, though, that I assume he provided your office with an email address. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yes, typically what happens is the, in this case, the owner will make a request to reduce the fine. So we have those correspondence. I don't, I don't know what correspondence did not occur or did occur. I don't have that information. Commissioner?
I'm, I'm reluctant here, and I'm not blaming your office at all. I imagine that you send out tons of emails and, you know, .com is .cm instead, and correspondents get lost. But Mr. Pendle's argument is predicated on the single fact that he didn't receive an email. So I'm sure that through public record or your office, that we very, very quickly can find out whether or not that email was sent. I would be willing to go with Mr., sorry, Commissioner Smith's idea if that was our, our error. But if that, in fact, was not our error, the email was sent out, which we have public record, then the error is not on the counties. It's completely squarely and totally with Mr. Pendle, and he should, my argument is, be responsible for the special magistrate's recommendation of 5645. So I would make a motion that, you know, that, that we table this until we can get some verification, because that was not listed in my packet as far as, you know, the, the lack of, the lack of email. And if it is, maybe we can find out, you know, how we, if this was on our end, how we prevent this in the future. Because I, my, you know, my heart goes out to Mr. Pendle. If it, if it was on our fault, then I think that we should, you know, take responsibility. But I don't want to blame you, I don't want to blame your office when, in fact, you may have followed protocol and sent the email out in plenty of time, giving him the opportunity, or his corporation the opportunity to do that.
I would like to ask the question, whatever happened to registered mail? So that you have proof that the recipient actually received the, since when did we start doing official business just by emails?
The registered mail is what we utilize for the notice of hearing and the notice of violation. For the reduction is usually the owner, we don't utilize registered mail for that piece, because we're not required by statute for those notices. So typically what happens is the applicant, or the, I say applicant, because I'm used to dealing with permits, so forgive me. The owner will, will initiate and ask if they can do the reduction. And then there's an email, it's just scheduling, it's not as a formal of a process, if you will, as the actual hearing, because they're simply coming forward and asking for a reduction.
Can I speak?
No, no, sir.
So I will, I will have to find out what, what happened there. I do not have that information. I apologize to the Board that I, this is the first I heard that they were not at the meeting. And what we will do is, we will definitely look into it and make sure that there's no procedures that we've, that we haven't followed, and to make sure that we don't have a hole in the net where we have communication gaps for this, for this occurring.
Commissioner Isnardi?
Well, then I would, I would like to withdraw my motion and, and give, make a second to Commissioner Tobias.
Let me let Commissioner Isnardi chime in first here. Commissioner Isnardi, and then Commissioner Barfield, your next, sir.
Okay, I just want some clarification and maybe a follow-up, if you'll indulge me. How much, I see in our thing, and you, sir, Ted, said that you paid, or you've already paid $2,500?
Yes, but I would like to clarify one thing. The first hearing, if, if we got the email, we would have got the reduction from that Board. We, the only reason we're in front of your Board today is because we missed that hearing. If we would have went to the first hearing, I know you're saying about the email, but they agree that it should be reduced to that, that that was their.
And honestly, I don't think that you'll, at least, just given our, our history up here, I don't think you'll probably hear us argue about a reduction. I think it's just about how far, you know what I mean, whether we go with the, the $2,600, which is, would be our cost, $2,692, or the recommended amount of $5,600. That's usually where we go if, if you have a compelling case.
Right.
And I'm always of the mindset is, if you rectified the problem, it's obviously was a problem that existed before you came about.
Correct.
And that's what I would tell this Board. Regardless of whether or not you were notified, the property had a problem. As soon as you were able to figure, or whatever, you fixed the problem. You didn't know there was a lien on the property. So it's in, in essence, and I don't think you would stand in front of this Board and lie, in essence, it was of no fault of your own. You're not going to let a piece of property accumulate a $20,000, nearly $20,000 fine that's worth $10,000.
Correct.
So, I mean, I am always an advocate for, let's cover our costs, let's cover the county's costs, and go from there. But you had said that you paid $2,500. I'm not sure I understand.
On county fines, because they require you to pay whatever out-of-pocket expenses you've, or they've already occurred before you can even go in front of the Board.
Okay, can I just talk to staff real fast? It says in our report that he had paid $800?
Yes, that's, that's what we have as a record of being paid. Now, what I can do is I can talk to Mr. Pendle and see if there was other fees that he may have paid that were not applied to the fines, because there's a code enforcement cost that also gets paid. And that's the cost of the hearing for the special magistrate and officer's time for that particular hearing. So that is paid, that is not considered a fine. That's a separate payment. So that may be what was included, or what may have been some of the fees that they've paid. But what we have is $880 being paid out of the actual cost, which started out to be $2,692.
Okay, because I think, honestly, I think that the issue of whether or not he was notified by email is sort of a separate issue, because if he's, if the Board typically, like I said, we oftentimes will go with the magistrate's reduction. The reduction looks like pretty much what they always recommend. And we either go with the reduction, or we go with the cost, depending on your, on your case, on whether or not we believe that you intentionally ignored it, a violation, or whether or not we think that it was a mistake on our part. But the email notification to me is such a mute, or such a moot point at this point, anyway. So I would be okay with, with covering the cost of what it cost the county, considering he didn't even know that there was a lien on this property. And that would be a total cost of $1,884, but I don't know what that is, if he's paid more or not. Maybe we do need to table this to get it more together, to figure out what happened.
We'd be happy with the $1,884. We've been waiting about five.
I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Ted.
If that's the Board's pleasure, you know, if the Board wants to table it, we can bring it back to the next meeting, which I believe at this point is the 13th. But I don't, I do, I'm, apologize that the, I just got an email from staff on it. It says, there is no notice of these cases, as they are inactive and from the date of the application. It says that the, an email was sent, and that Mr. Pendle missed it, the date. I don't have the attached email, that's just what staff sent me.
Okay.
So I don't know that that makes it any more clear for you.
And again, I don't even, I don't even know if that's relevant, really, because this is usually the, the type of item we get, is the reduction recommended by the magistrate. And then we decide at that point whether or not we go with the recommendation, or whether or not we go with cost. And that, on the once or twice ever we wiped it out completely, but we usually try to recoup our costs.
So what I can tell you is, the information that staff has given me as part of the package is what we've passed forward, and that is the $1,884 remains for the cost.
Because on a separate note, I don't think that the county should make money off of people that, that have fixed the violation. I think we cover our costs, and that's what they should pay, but that's more of a philosophical discussion for, for another time, I'm sure.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Tobias, I think you're going to table, but just so you know, I, I think the $1,884 is probably going to be appropriate when we get done, just to cover our cost also. You didn't, you paid a fair market value for it, but I think county's got to cover their, their losses, so other taxpayers don't have to pick it up. But, sir, did you want to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just until we have all the facts, I think Mr. Pendle should, you know, shouldn't take our word for it, that the, that the email was sent. I think this all predicates on the fact that, of this email, he said that if he was there, it would have been lowered to that amount. And, and so I think this email is the, is the linchpin on it. And, and I think that, I, it's wonderful, your staff said they sent it, but I think Mr. Pendle should have the opportunity to actually see that. So I would make a motion to table this to, to the next meeting.
Motion to table, and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Ted, I got you, and we're all done, sir. It does have the page in here with the recommendation on it. Is that what the magistrate mutually follows when he makes those, those rulings? Or how does that work on page three of three?
So on page three of three, yes. So this is the recommendation that the, that the special magistrate signs and fills out based on the evidence that's been presented.
Okay, so he probably would have done that, because I've never known them to, to recommend an amount that's less than our cost, but he was going to on this one? That's interesting.
The reason that, the reason that the recommendation was less than what the cost was is because there was already a payment made of $808. So that's why you see that, that there. So the cost that I give you is, is just what's remaining.
Okay.
So it's a little easier for us to track what the Board action is and through the minutes and stuff.
So it's the amount that's still due?
That's the, yeah, that's the amount that's due.
Okay, okay. I guess tableing it was a very good idea. All right, moving into the next item.
Yes, so this is a, another request for the Board to consider the special magistrate's recommendation to reduce an accrued fine from $22,575 down to $5,835 and release the lien upon payment in full for code enforcement case 15 CE 01380. This was for overgrowth as well. This case was active for 903 days. The owner had made a request to the special magistrate to reduce the fine down to $2,000. Our remaining cost in this particular case is $1,320.
Okay. Commissioner Barfield, your district, sir? Oh, I don't have a card on you. I'm going to have to have you fill out a card in a few minutes, sir.
This is my first time doing this.
That's okay, Steph, I'm not that good at this either. If you give me your name and address for the record, and just fill me out a card when you're done.
Sure. My name is Brian Curly, representing the buyer, or the owners, excuse me. I live at 2140 Walton's Court in Vero Beach, Florida.
Thank you, sir.
And I did get the email. I did go to the magistrate. We were just asking, we've been financially distressed in this property for a number of years, over a decade. And we've brought it up to code as of, I think, the spring was when we went before the magistrate. And we're just asking to follow the magistrate's recommendation. That's all we're asking.
The magistrate's recommendation of $5,000?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Barfield, your district, Commissioner Tobias, your lights on.
I've never heard this before. I, I, I think we need to, I'm immediately going to make a motion that we accept the suggestion of, of this individual, that we take the magistrate's suggested fine and reduce it to 5835.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. Let me go ahead and see if we have a second.
I'll second first.
Second, Commissioner Barfield, and sir, you're on.
I just want to point out that this is not a new owner. This is the owner who's had this property all along. And for how many days? 903 days, the, the overgrowth was still there. And now, all of a sudden, it's done. I just think that is something, you know, I don't know how difficult it is to take care of overgrowth, but I don't think that, I mean, I, it just amazes me that you could let it go that long, to be honest with you.
We had actually been having the project mode. There was a section that had been missed that was above certain inches.
So you hadn't checked it in 900 days?
I'm, I'm new to the project, sir. The project's been held by the current owners for over a decade. I've only been on the project for about a year, so I'm new.
So the owners haven't seen it in 900 days, I guess. I tell you, I'm okay with the reduction to the, to the magistrate, special magistrate's recommendation, but I just think it's, it's appalling that, you know, something like this happens when the owner has it and doesn't do anything about it. And now, I don't know what they're going to do with the property now, it's not my concern, but all of a sudden, now they're going to get cleaned up. I, I just think that's something when we need to look at very carefully when it happens like that. So, but again, I second it, and I'm okay with reducing it to the $5,835.
Do you have a motion on the table? Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I'm sorry, we did second it already. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Commissioner Tobias made the motion, and Commissioner Barfield seconded, in case I confused you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving into miscellaneous, item 5.
Commissioners, this is the application for the 2018 Justice Assistance Grant. It's for $56,000. The funds will be used to pay for a portion of an investigator assigned to our criminal investigations for economic fraud and identity theft. There are no additional funds being requested by the, from the Board at this time.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Isnardi made a motion. Commissioner Smith seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. I have no more public comment cards. I'm going to move into Board reports. County Manager Abate?
No report.
County Attorney, Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Commissioner Barfield?
Over the last month or so, I routinely go visit city councils within my district. And I've been to the City of Rockledge and the City of Cape Canaveral, and just giving them an update on things. And both of them wanted to make a point to thank the Brevard County Commission for how well we work with cities in, in this county. And I think that, I just had to bring that forward and let everybody know that. Other than that, I have no report.
Thank you, sir. That's a nice report. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This past week, I had the opportunity, as a couple, I think, other members up here on this Board have, to go spend a day with a Brevard County professional firefighter. on this Board have, to go spend a day with the Brevard County professional firefighters. I worked alongside Lieutenant Johann Toro Cologne, who's from Station 48 in Viera. He is a, I could go over the list of the many skills that he has, everything from building, repelling, to hazardous materials, to the fact that he serves this country as a reserve in the, in the United States Air Force. But I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the work that went into the organization of this event by the Brevard County firefighters, the kindness and patience that was shown being a part. Can, do I have, can I get the pictures up here? Are they coming? Okay, great. Being a part of the training showed me how physically intensive the job is and just how much these men and women care about their community. Okay. Wonderful. Great. I'm glad you didn't grab the picture. You see the fire ladder in the back? That goes up like 50 feet. I made it up like 12 of those 50 feet, but I do have to call out a couple people. First of all, Chairman Jim Leisenfeld completed the training, climbing up to the top, especially in his jeans on such a hot day. It was great to see him out there. And then, I was most impressed by our Budget Chief Jill Hayes. She scaled all 55 feet of the ladder. I know I got a little, little peer pressure that ladies were doing it, and I said Jill is no ordinary lady. She is much closer to a superhero. So, it was wonderful to see staff out there learning about the day-to-day operations of the, of the firefighters. I certainly want to thank them. I want to thank my staff, and I want to again thank the firefighters that are out there risking their lives to keep Brevard County safe. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to give a shout-out to our firefighters and other county staff that have traveled to the Panhandle to help aid and stand alongside our fellow Floridians in their time of need. I think that's a very big deal, and we should be very proud of those folks. And just to remember, a reminder that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and as Chairman of the Real Men Wear Pink, I want to thank all those working to raise money to help wipe out this terrible disease, and for those in attendance, like myself and some others. And Jim, not only can climb 50 feet, he can wear that bright pink blazer at two meetings in a row. So, kudos to him. So, anyway, oh, and Mr. Toby even wore pink today. So, a real shout-out to all the real men that wear pink. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Isnardi?
No report.
And I have one item here. Ms. Bentley was so kind to do the resolution for us. There's a, a board that Commissioner Smith serves on, and I'm the alternate, and neither of us are able to make it. And Commissioner Tobias, the manager said that you were willing to go and sit on this Board, sir?
Yeah, I'd be honored, Madam Chair.
That's so wonderful. So, if the commission doesn't mind, if, we'd have to make a motion to make a second alternate of Mr., Commissioner Tobias, and then we'd be able to be covered for this next Friday.
I'll make a motion that we make Commissioner Tobias a second alternate according to this resolution, and that we approve this resolution.
Thank you. I have a motion. Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioner Tobias, for stepping up. And on that note, I will call this, oh, Commissioner...